I call to order this June 27, 2023, meeting of the Oberlin School District Board of Education. Please call the roll.
Mr. Stanley?
Here.
Ms. Shum?
Here.
Ms. Stagel?
Here.
Ms. Ameca?
Here. I will entertain a motion and a second to adopt the agenda for today's meeting.
So moved.
Second.
And we have some revisions to the agenda.
We are going to add an executive session after the treasures items. And we are going to pull out item J four and make it item K under personnel items.
Okay, so with those revisions to the agenda, any questions or discussion? Hey, hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Stanley?
Yes.
Ms. Shum?
Yes.
Ms. Stagel?
Yes.
Ms. Ameca?
Yes. Okay, and now we have citizens' concerns on agenda items. Do we have any? Nope, none online. Okay, thank you. Okay, so moving on to news of note and presentations.
Dr. Hall.
Tonight, we have a couple of things to announce to the board and the community. I would like to thank our students for attending summer school program. We have about 20 students attending the high school summer school program for credit recovery. We have about 10 students that are doing some enrichment pieces as well. Also, last week, we had our first wave of tech camp students who graduated and came through. It was outstanding job by them. It's a week-long various activities, did a phenomenal presentation at the end. And next, we'd like to announce some of our retirees. We have Amy Swope and Marian Suffin, who are retiring this year. Their plaques are on the way, so I'd like to reward them with plaques when they come in at the next board meeting. Hopefully, it'll be here in August to announce to them. Amy is our curriculum director, who will be replaced by Amicia Baker. She'll be the new curriculum director, and with that movement, Ms. Weber will become the principal at Oberlin Elementary School. Next, we have a presentation from our communications, report from Melissa Linebrink. She's done a phenomenal job this year of taking care of our social media, work with the community agencies, also working with our Eco Olympics and various things within the community as well.
I can't hear you. Is it picking up? Hello? Okay, I guess that's like stand on the mic, whatever. Here we go. Okay, so I just wanted to give a report. I did this last year as well, just to kind of let everybody know where we have been and where we're going. So, okay. This was just to let everybody know that prior to 2022, Oberlin did not really have a communications department. It was mainly the superintendent, building principals, and the athletic director at the time. And that at that time, each had their own way of communicating with the public. Today, there is one official Facebook page, Twitter page, Instagram, and blog site, along with the district website and the athletic social media sites. Bryce Johnson also has access to the district page, and he uses Box Out Sports, which is huge during the sports seasons. That was huge, especially during the track season right now. It seems like every other day, we were posting about the Hudson family, so that was amazing. So it's really nice that he's able to access that as well. And one of the new components of the communications department is the Oberlin Schools Alumni Association, which I will talk about later on in my slideshow. Numbers speak. So again, I hate math, which is hilarious because I love when I see these numbers. Facebook still remains the number one source of information for our parents. Currently, you can see that we have 1,126 likes and 1,511 followers. Like I had mentioned before, one of the highest posts was when Evan Hudson won state, and you can see that that hit 6,430 post impressions. That means like once I posted or once Bryce posted it, it was sent out everywhere, and people kept hitting on it or liking it or loving it. And then 6,245 people were reached and 1,502 post engagements. Again, those are like the thumbs up, the hearts. Twitter is our in-between social media platform. It has not seen a great increase in followers despite the fact that everything I post on Facebook and Instagram is also hitting on Twitter. However, Twitter is slowly changing how it's running things, and I'm sure most of you have heard. It's kind of hit or miss right now. People were paying for their Twitter feed to be like popular. I don't remember what it was, but we're not doing that. What did help us, though, is the Kurt Russell with the hashtag, hashtag NTOY2022. That was really helpful. Once I started using it, so did everybody else, so that was nice. And then currently, we only have 416 followers on Twitter, so at least we're maintaining. Instagram is the place where our younger families and students go for information. It's one of the most popular social media platforms that there is outside of TikTok. Instagram was started in November in 2020 in the middle of COVID. And currently, we have 567 followers. Every time I look on that number, that number is going up, so it's probably gone up again. What they have started creating, in November, we started creating these reels. They're like short movie clips. And one of our main ones was Isaac Thompson's signing day. That saw 760 views. I don't know if he knows that, however. And then an LMS volleyball game had over 1,000 views as well. These are just really, when I go to an event, I take photos with my phone, even though the district did provide me with a camera. Sometimes using my phone for a reel is really helpful for this. And then these are just the numbers again, but we've already gone over those, so. In the news, the Chronicle Telegram, we only had 35 printed stories. That is not including sports stories because sometimes the sports stories might just hint on Oberlin, but 35 strong stories is what I was looking for. This is lower than in years past. However, back in January, we actually lost our Oberlin reporter. He now works at Community Services, Jason Hawk. So they're doing, they have hired another reporter, so I'm not sure. I haven't really posted anything to them since school is out, so hopefully, we get those numbers back up again. The Morning Journal has been great. That's because they literally take everything I write and run it word for word, which is fine. But they're also lacking reporters, so they really rely heavily on a lot of schools in the area as well. They're striving to remain connected to the communities they serve. That's what I've noticed with the Chronicle. Before COVID hit, they used to really tap into the local communities. There was an Oberlin page at one time, and now because of COVID, advertisers have pulled out, and the papers are getting smaller, so. And then the Oberlin Tribune, that's interesting because I send it to the same as the Chronicle, and they're owned by the same company, but they had 77 printed news stories. And that's where a lot of our positive news stories are going right now. And like I said, the same reporter for the Chronicle will be having stuff in the Tribune, so we'll see what happens. Wrong way. In the news part two, Cleveland Magazine had a publication featuring Mr. Russell. All of this was Mr. Russell-based. The ESC of Northeast Ohio, they were in the fall 2022. And then last June, they did a feature on Mr. Russell as well.
If you haven't listened to his speech at Worcester, you really need to hear it. It was amazing.
Yes. And then on the news, we had Channel Eight. Earlier in the year, it seems so long ago when they did this, the string quartet, they traveled to the media center. They performed live on Fox 8 in the morning. They did a great job. It was the first time in front of, you know, a community and an audience, and they were, it was amazing for them. So they did a really great job. Channel Five, they highlighted Mr. Russell being back in DC. And then not too long ago, they had our graduate Nathan Malakar. Yeah, I can hardly see that. He was the best in the class. Those are really exciting for families around here. You see the little cap and the gown, and you hear them talk, and it was just kind of cool. And then we also had Channel One. They came out of Columbus. They are in Columbus and Cleveland, so they share news stories. And they did a wonderful job covering our Black History Month interactive posters. Wrong way. These are very deceiving. See, I'm just going to keep you here longer. Just kidding. Okay, other ways we communicate. The monthly district newsletter. This year, we went down to one newsletter per month in an effort to not overwhelm our families. Sometimes too much information, they get boggled down. It's just how it is, even me as a parent. So we went down to once a month. It was published every third Thursday of the month with the exception of, I think, Christmas and Easter, the holidays. It seemed to be a perfect solution for everybody, and we will continue with the monthly newsletter again. That's all electronic. And then the 44074 newsletter, most of you should have received this. Ms. Baker, I wanted you to know that they were mailed, and if you would like extra copies, I brought some for you. Okay. Because some people I did hear that were not getting them, so I called. Help yourselves to those. They were just published last week, so it's part of the presses. The one for the month of August is going to be sent electronically, and that one's going to feature a lot of our back-to-school information for the families or what's coming up in the fall for them as well.
Does the monthly newsletter just go to the parents, or is that available for community members also?
It goes through school messenger, and it's also, so everybody, so we've got alumni, PTO, all of the schools. And then it also goes on our website, so anybody can access it because Steve always posts it for us. And then the 440741, we usually do post that as well, but I kind of wanted to let people find it in their mailboxes since we paid to publish it. It was a pretty big one. Okay, then finally, we have the Oberlin Schools Alumni Association. I came on officially in January to start facilitating this. So far, we have our 501(c)(3) status. We have our bank account, and we have all of our board of directors, so this is great. They just had a meeting not too long ago where they nailed down the, some of the details for the Save the Date Pancake Breakfast. There's also flyers in the back as well. And they're just getting their, they just had their, the baseball and softball event. So we're slowly building up our presence in the community. And we're really excited about the pancake breakfast one because it coincides with the Fall Alumni Sports Day. We're going to see alumni playing volleyball, soccer, and flag football. And there's also going to be a bench dedication from the class of, I believe, I can't read that, and I wrote it myself. 1990, thank you. So they're going to go ahead and do that as well. We're very excited about that. And let me see, I'm looking here. We also have alumni shirts, which has helped for our small financial backing. And once these shirts have run out, we're going to do something different, I think, that's what I've heard. I'll keep looking at Anne because she's a treasure. She's been instrumental in all of this, so. But it's been a really great, great time so far. Where do we go from here? Okay, with the return of Mr. Russell to the district, I'm going to work with Dr. Hall and Mr. Nielsen over here. We're trying to think of something like home of, underneath all of our correspondences. We should say something like home of 2022 National Teacher of the Year or something along those lines. That way, all of our communication goes out. We should be proud of that, so we're going to work on that. Working on Phase Two of construction, this is very tentative. Obviously, you know, Phase Two is also, you know, down the road. Looking to rebrand. By rebranding, that means it doesn't have to be something that we go crazy with because I know Oberlin has. We want to take, we take pride in our tradition. But, you know, if we could do something along with what we've created for Kurt, the colors. Again, this is not just me, this is everybody, but, you know, looking ahead. And then personally, to start inviting community members and stakeholders to our events, sporting events, fine arts, drama club. Sometimes I think, like Ms. Stagel was saying, you know, sometimes we just focus on our families. And I think with Oberlin, more people want to come, and they don't have to be alumni. They can be anybody. Anybody can go to really any of our events. So try to work on ways that we could incorporate them into, into what we do here at Oberlin. And then finally, looking to assist our class of 2024 students with ways to commemorate their senior year at Ohio, at Ohio, at Oberlin. Looking to do like a senior picture package with the camera, that, just something different. Not everybody in the district has the means to do their senior pictures, so it's just something nice that we're looking to do. And to be onsite as well for like the final drama performance, final night of football, just something like that, so. Looking like that, and this is just some of what we've done. That's pretty much it. Any questions?
Nice job, Melissa.
Thank you. Good job, Melissa.
Thank you.
Thanks for all the information and if you provide for us as well. Next, we have Mr. Drew Solly from Liberty Development Company.
I just like to thank all those who are starting the Oberlin Alumni Association, obviously, Anne and you. And I'm not alumni myself, but I think it's a very, very important step for the Oberlin City Schools.
Lots of Hall of Fame is coming soon, so they're working on a Hall of Fame as well.
Oh, nice.
So it should be really nice. Great job. I think that's been up and running alumni, been trying to get up and running for a while, so.
Since we started the strategic planning work, yeah. It took Melissa. Melissa's the linchpin.
So it's nice to see it finally coming up, coming to light. Drew Solly is with Liberty Development Company. He's working with us, repurposing Eastwood Elementary, and he's going to provide our community and the board with an update. Thanks, Drew.
Thanks, Dr. Hall. Members of the board, good to see you again. Since last we met, or I had a chance to speak with you, we've been busy getting to know the property in the community. We've been engaged with talking to city council members, reached out to all of them. I think had the opportunity to talk to six of the seven, talked to folks from Kendall to Oberlin, Oberlin Community Land Trust. Held a community meeting, got to know some of our neighbors. We actually papered the neighborhood about six weeks ago. I think we had 25 or so folks turn out where we started to talk about some initial ideas on how to repurpose the site. Since then, we've had some follow-up and feedback from some of our neighbors, too, who are still thinking about what that could be. We connected with the city, the planning director, Carrie Porter, and then consultant, they have by the name of Kirby Date, who's working on their community master plan update and doing some initial analysis on things like housing and the demand for housing, the housing market, concurrently doing our own market analysis and understanding exactly what could, is possible at this site. And when you say what's possible, it's a balance between what can you build? What can you afford to build? And what can the market bear? And then coming, bringing those together and finding the right mix. You know, some of the feedback we've gotten from folks is there's, on the housing front, you know, we feel this is predominantly a housing project is what it's going to be. I don't think its repurposes any kind of commercial. You know, it doesn't seem appropriate being in a residential neighborhood. I think it's likely it's a multifamily for rent kind of situation. We've looked at combinations of repurposing the school building for that for-rent kind of housing. That would be predicated on applying for and receiving historic tax credits. The building has some challenges in that front. Though it is of age of eligibility, it's more than 50 years old, built in the early 50s. It was in an earlier inventory that was done by the State Historic Preservation Office for commercial buildings in Oberlin. It was identified as a building that wouldn't likely be eligible to be on the National Register of Historic Places. What has to happen next is we would have to overcome that. We would have to convince them that, in fact, that assessment was not correct and that, and convince them as such. And as you know, the state tax credits are on a competitive cycle that happen every six months. So the next one would be coming up in August. And because this building isn't already on the National Register, it's not locally designated historic landmark, we can't actually apply for this next round, so we'd have to wait into next year. And then it's estimating the probability of actually being successful and receiving those tax credits. We presented an option, and again, by presenting, it was, you know, folks always want to hear the details on how big are the one-bedroom units, how many of them are going to be, are you going to allow dogs? We got into those kind of questions, and I said, we don't even know what kind of units we're building yet. We just want to talk about the idea of new residential being here. And one of the other scenarios is keeping the existing building, repurposing it with historic tax credits, and then building initial, additional units on the back of the property because it's a five-acre site. Or raising the building and then building all-new on the site. And, you know, some of the market analysis we've done, and there was some sticker shock, I think, from folks at the meeting about the kinds of rents that would be likely, and we're not talking about subsidized housing at this point. This was just a market rate kind of housing situation is what we were looking at. Not that we wouldn't look at workforce housing or low-income housing, but that's not what we talked about really at this meeting. It came up in conversation. But I mean, rents for a one-bedroom, you're looking in the $1,400 a month kind of neighborhood, based on the cost of construction and the number of units you can get. So where we are and what I look forward to continuing to discuss with the board is, I think there's a path forward with the community about talking about and developing a cogent strategy to redevelop the site for residential in one form or another. We're at that decision point time in the near future about what is that going to look, smell, and feel like? And how do we actually do that? And then my job is to present to you what I think the probability of success is because we have to rezone the property, right? And then we have to take that all the way through that process, all the other entitlements that have to happen through the city, be in a position then where we can buy the property from the district and then begin construction. And so we're still bullish on the opportunity. I think there's, and the more we learn and the better we're looking at the housing market, or the more clearly we're understanding the housing market because overall, Oberlin's housing market's been fairly flat. There hasn't been any new construction, especially in the multifamily in recent years, other than the condo project that was done right on the square. I know there have been projects that have been looked at. As I shared with you, I think last time we spoke, I don't think this is a for-sale residential development just because the cost of building new and selling homes, the market's not ready for it yet. It doesn't mean it couldn't be at some point, but I think is this first kind of major reinvestment potentially in new housing, I don't think it's a for-sale situation. I think those houses, based on where properties are selling in Oberlin right now, new houses would probably be in the $450,000 to $500,000 range. I don't think that's right yet, but we feel like, and again, as I mentioned, we're a developer that builds and holds, and so we take a long view. I think that market could eventually start to get there. Now, the pushback you get is about gentrification, right? Are you starting to price everybody out of the market? The way we look at it is, as long as you're continuing to diversify your housing options, that you're not just backing all, we're going to do high-end housing, expensive housing, we're all going to do market-rate, high-end apartments. It's can you actually present and develop a mix of housing? Because communities that are diversifying their housing options are the ones that are thriving best, but you have to start somewhere. Whether or not this is going to be an affordable project or not is yet to be determined, but we're modeling it and looking at it as a market-rate project for now. Potentially subject to change, but I want you to know that's our benchmark in how we're looking at it. You know, we continue, we want to continue talking to our neighbors, reaching out to the folks at the city, you know, as we start to develop a clearer plan to move forward. But like I said, I think there's a path here, and I think there's an opportunity still here. The more we've learned, usually it goes two ways, right? The more you learn, you back away from the opportunity because there are more concerns. It's starting to check some of the right boxes. But we also know we've disqualified some options out of that way without having the certainty on historic tax credits. That puts that repurposing makes it a lot more challenging, not impossible, but just to manage expectations. I want to make sure everyone's aware of that. And, you know, the other things that are on my mind is, you know, in order to apply for those tax credits, risk to the district, for example, if you put a local designation, you landmarked it locally, and our deal doesn't work out, then you're in a position where you might have a property that you might need to raise at some point, and now there's another layer of regulation on it that makes it more difficult for you. So I'm sensitive to those kinds of things, and that's, those are the elements we're all trying to balance as we're evaluating. That's generally the update, and I'm happy to answer any questions the board might have, so thank you.
So you covered a lot there, and I'm just sort of trying to catch up here. Historic tax credits, that would be based on if it gets designated as a historic landmark, then there's money available to...
Yeah, so the summary on that is there's both federal and state historic tax credits available. So as soon as you are, you can apply for the federal, you qualify as a property that's worthy of being on the National Register of Historic Places, which is kept by the National Park Service. The state credits follow that same model. They're the same criteria, the Secretary of the Interior standards for historic rehabilitation. But the state tax credits are competitive, so you have to score a certain number of points. If you don't get it, you're not awarded in that round. You have to continue to apply or not. In a project like this, you need both the state and the federal for it to work, the economics on that. The state tax credit is a 25% tax credit, and the federal is a 20% tax credit. And in aggregate, that's substantial money. What those are are income tax credits. So we get $1 million in tax credits, right? I can then sell those to somebody for 80 cents on the dollar. So that means $800,000 to the project. That helps us reduce our costs, so that makes these projects pencil. The, but in order to do that, the building has to be of a certain age and eligibility. It either has to be kind of a remarkable piece of architecture or it served a specific need in the community, the educational history of Oberlin, for example, or George Washington slept there kind of stuff, right? And if that happens, then it can qualify. But then you still have to, even if they initially say you're, it's possible, you have to actually submit the nomination, go through a fairly rigorous process to, for lack of a better word, convince the State Historic Preservation Office that it is designation-worthy. The federal government then also has to agree, and then it's placed on the National Register. But until that happens, you can't apply.
And the competitive nature is it's competitive to get that historic designation? Or has, or competitive to get the tax credit once you have that designation?
So it's rigorous and challenging to get the historic designation. It's competitive to get the tax credits. So it's a 100-point scoring system. So they look at things like your ZIP code, so the poverty rate in the area, right? Are you the only project in the community that's applying in this round? How many square feet? How long has it been vacant? What's the total investment that's happening? So on all of those things, what's the state's return on investment? But if they give you X amount of tax credits, how many jobs will be created? What's the property tax value, those kinds of things? They score you on a 100-point scale in, I think, seven or eight different categories, and then you're ranked against all the other projects that apply in a particular round.
Well, obviously, you feel that we have some shot at this, or you wouldn't be pursuing it.
But we're not pursuing it yet because...
You're not pursuing it.
No.
Well, you're at least talking about it.
We're talking, well, we're talking about it because it's come up, right? With the building of this vintage. And to just try to renovate this building to do all the things that need to do to bring it into a property that we would own for the next 25 years, so roofs, windows, new HVAC, all of that. The cost is prohibitive, prohibitive without the tax credits. So the tax credits are put in place to incentivize folks to take older buildings because oftentimes, to scrape and build new is less expensive. Not, and then you can get it, you can design exactly the units you want, right? Where this was built as a school, and now you're trying to turn it into something else. That's also where some of that cost comes in. But we're putting it on the table because it's come up as a point of conversation, and that's part of our discussion ongoing with the board of, listen, if we pursue this, there's some risks to the board that if our project doesn't happen and a, even a local designation or a National Register designation, doesn't mean it's impossible for you to tear it down, but nobody else shows up to repurpose that building. It's five years from now, you know, it's in disrepair, and you need to raise that building. It may be an extra layer of challenge to be able to do that. So those are some of the things. We don't want to take that so far. We couldn't apply for it, pursue the tax credits without your permission anyway, but we don't want to take it so far that it puts you in a position that is less favorable than you are right now.
And I take it there's no way to guarantee that if you do get the designation, you would get the state funding?
Correct. Other than that, it sounds pretty good, doesn't it? Other than that, it sounds pretty good, right? Right, that's the other risk part of this, too.
I appreciate you talking about, you know, gentrification and the concerns on that. I think that's an issue for all of us.
Is that $1,400 a month figure based on getting the tax credits or not getting the tax credits? Or that's just what you think you can charge for a one-bedroom apartment in Oberlin?
So it's based on what the costs would be and then what it is to get a reasonable return on your investment while you're looking at paying off debt on the property over the next 20 years. And so that's what it would cost. Now whether, now I think the market can bear that, but I think those are the kinds of numbers we're looking at in order for this to be economically sustainable.
And that's the cost with or without the tax credit?
So it's in either scenario with a new build, it's probably, so with new construction, without tax credits, that's about what it would be. And on the repurposing of the building with historic tax credits, that's what it would be. And that's where you get to that kind of parity where the new construction versus the repurposing the building come about to the same kinds of costs, and you're looking at the same amount approximately for units. The only difference is where you could enhance that is in a new construction piece, you can customize what your units are going to be. So, you know, like this product, the school building itself doesn't lend to like two-bedroom units very much, right? That may be where the market is right now. Our initial analysis is the market is strong on one-bedrooms and studios. Two-bedrooms maybe, but mostly on ones, one bedrooms and studios is where we would see the majority of units, either in repurposing the building or new construction.
So what are you hearing from the city of Oberlin?
So initially, you know, the conversation we had was to... So initially, you know, the conversation we had was to introduce ourselves and talk about a residential repurpose. The feedback we're generally getting is, yes, there's a need for more housing and a variety of housing. You know, they're, they appropriately said, listen, we're not going to tell you what kind of housing. Their, their job is to regulate the land use part of this, on the zoning, and, you know, how high, how many, all of those kinds of things. And actually rezoning the property to be a, be able to do something other than use it as a school building or single-family homes. But the general feedback was, yes, there is a need for additional housing in Oberlin. Thank you. Appreciate it, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Next, we have facilities update. Ms. Rybick will provide information regarding heat relief centers, OES, and summer projects, and update on construction manager as well.
Sure, sure. Good evening. This is a busy time for us in operations. Believe it or not, the buildings don't go to sleep in summer like we think they do. So we have summer stu, school still going on at the high school. We have open gym every day at the middle school. We have safety town here all day long, and third-grade reading guarantee, and getting ready to start another summer school. So it's challenging, of course, and I want to thank our custodians and our cleaners and our district maintenance guys, because they are working around all of this, as the grass grows really fast right now. So thank them for that. We want to talk a little bit about, believe it or not, we are going to announce that this building project is closed. So we still have some warranty issues that we're working through, but that doesn't affect anything with the closure. We've got about seven warranty issues that, again, those are going to be ongoing things as we live in the building. So we are officially closed, we're waiting to send the paperwork to the OFCC, correct? So again, thank Dan for, for that work, making sure that we're progressing to, to close that. So we didn't know if we'd ever come to that point, so thank you. We want to talk a little bit, Linda, come on up with me. So Linda and the city of Oberlin has been working with the Climate Task Force for a couple of years now, right?
Yep.
And the schools have had a presence on this task force as we've moved through. And part of that task force has branched off a little bit as we've looked at our climate and possibly the need for these heat relief centers. And other communities in the area have tried this, but we've got big, beautiful buildings that now have air conditioning. And depending on where we are with extreme heat days, would be, would we be willing to partnership with the city and the community to, what would that mean to maybe let some people get some relief if they really needed to? So we've, we've been going through that process, and the city actually has come up with a, with an MOU with some local churches and the college, I think? We're still working on that one.
The library?
Library.
Library, our own Prospect Building.
Yep, community services also.
Community services.
So at just what we can provide, but this MOU, we've been brainstorming with the city legal team and you, and we've had, let's see, Ms. Rosa Gaston was, was early on with the conversations, too. So one thing I do want to say before Linda talks a little bit about this is that the MOU was not a binding MOU, it was kind of an aspirational MOU. So as we work through this, that made us feel a little bit better, because we are a school system with students involved and in and out, so there, there are lots of hurdles that we need to overcome. But we certainly want to partner, and Linda, you want to talk a little bit about it?
Good evening, and thank you for inviting me to speak briefly. So I am Linda Arbogaston, I am the Sustainability Coordinator for the city of Oberlin. And my job is primarily to implement our community's climate action plan. So when I first started about four and a half years ago, that meant mostly carbon reduction, you know, reducing our emissions. And we have some pretty bold goals as it relates to that. But resilience is one piece of that, and in resilience is adaptation. And as we conducted a vulnerability assessment with the Environmental Studies Department of Oberlin College in 2021, we saw that extreme heat was really our vulnerability in Oberlin. By 2030, extreme heat days are going to triple in Oberlin, like literally in, you know, our zip code. So, you know, we're, we're looking at system by system and vulnerability by vulnerability as a task force, and like Jim said, we've been doing this for two years, and we're, you know, we're looking at the whole gamut. But the first one that we're really concerned about starting relatively soon is extreme heat, and we have vulnerable residents in our communities. So I think you've seen a draft of the MOU, or you will see, you will see it tonight. And as Jim said, this isn't a binding document, it's more that you're willing to partner with us in this conversation. So already, we have onboard the public library as a first line of defense. So in a month, if our fire chief, who is the designated, you know, emergency systems personnel, if he sees a weather forecast of three days over 95 in a row, he will put a WENS alert out and say, you know, we have this coming, and our first places that we can go are, we're going to have the library, because it's already open. It's already a public space, and the library is open to being that space, that cooling space. Prospect School, we have the senior center. So we will put this out to seniors to say, hey, you don't have AC in your house, this heat is coming, here is a place that you can go. So we're going to have these first line of defense places that are public places. That isn't what we're asking of buildings like churches and the schools. What we're looking at you guys for is more of a second or third line of defense, say things get really worse and we need overnight shelters, or we need extended stay shelters, or the public library is inundated and need, and there's some overflow need. It would never happen without first checking with all the spaces who have signed these MOUs and saying, so what hours would you be available? How many people could you accommodate? What sort of special needs do you have? Like, for example, at Prospect, we have a summer camp with children. So there are times when we really wouldn't bring in people from the public, and I'm sure that that's likely the case here as well. So again, the MOU is entering into this conversation with us, and it's also a chance to, to look at that and say, hey, maybe there's some things in there you would like to change or, you know, edit out. Our law director is certainly amenable to that conversation. But I do, I really appreciate that Jim's been attending our task force, and, you know, this is kind of the first phase of, and maybe even the first opportunity to really look at this task force and say, well, what are we going to do? Well, you know, we've been meeting, and we keep meeting, and we keep talking, but cooling and relief stations are happening in many communities. There are cities that have people who are heat coordinators as their whole job. And especially in the Midwest, it is, it's becoming an issue and increasingly so. So I appreciate you thinking about this, I know you're going to look at this later tonight, but thanks again for having me, and happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, this is completely new to me. Didn't realize, I mean, obviously realized, you know, with climate change, this is happening in the world over. People don't want to be housed in a, you know, warehouse sort of, but they don't want to just come someplace and just be told to sit.
Right.
So what, you know, what do cooling and relief centers do to accommodate that? You know, is it TVs, is it activities?
Well, that's another reason why we have this first phase of the library, where you go and you, you know, look at books, read, use the computers, people go there anyway. David Fosna, our library director, has worked in other libraries, and he said, you know, we are already doing it, we just aren't, you know, writing them down. I think that we would want to start tracking to some degree so that we can get a sense. The Prospect Senior Center, again, there's many activities that happen there. So we would plug this to seniors to say, hey, here's a great place to come for a lot of reasons, but we have three days in a row of really hot weather, and you need a, your body needs a break so that it can stay safe. So, you know, we're going to start a public health marketing campaign along with this, but we've definitely talked about how, yeah, people don't just want to go and sit in a room. That, that's more of an emergency crisis situation, you know, we're not there yet, let's hope that's, that's not in the short term.
And that's, again, I think when we were looking at kind of the tiers of where the schools might fall into that, you know, we don't have, that might be what, what the elementary starts to look like in the, in these cafeteria areas, because we don't have recreational directors, we don't have personnel who can do those kind of things with them. So this would be sort of, in my mind, an extreme situation where people are, if their air conditioning is off in their house, it's a dangerous situation, and they need to come somewhere and cool off during the day until it cools off that night. So, you know, coordination with that, but unfortunately, there's not a lot that we could offer at this time without some pretty high personnel costs, I would think, that would go along with it. But again, we're all in discussion of, of what that could mean and how we can help.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's definitely an important issue, and I appreciate you, Jim. I appreciate you participating in this.
Well, we appreciate it. Thank you, Linda. The next part, obviously you've been aware of the whole Phase Two project, trying to move forward and what that means to Oberlin schools. We took the first step last month with going through this selection process, RFQ process for hiring an architect, and which you did, to look at the pre-bond services and kind of the design. Well, the second phase of that, as you know, because you've gone through this, is, is doing the same process with the CMR, Construction Manager at Risk. And so we've taken that on in this past month, and two of you have been members of the Selection Committee, and thank you very much for going through that. But what we have tonight is, the committee has selected Hammond Construction to do our pre-bond work, to work with TDA and the architects to start to lay out some costs of what a 6-8 would cost, or what a 9-12 would. So we can bring you some ideas on what that next step, what we can afford to do next. So the committee selected Hammond Construction, which is going to be on the agenda coming up, which is why we want to talk about this. But we also have, Jeff Tuckerman, come on up. Jeff is a representative for, for Hammond Construction, and just wanted you to get a chance to meet Jeff about, if you wanted to talk to him a little bit about the situation, or I didn't know if Jeff wanted to pitch Hammond at all a little bit to us.
Well, I, I would like to take the opportunity if I could. My name is Jeff Tuckerman, I'm Vice President for Facility, Facilities Planning for Hammond Construction. And on behalf of Hammond, I'd like to take the committee for, but I'd like to thank the board for their consideration of Hammond Construction. We're pretty excited about this, and we've already been working with TDA. We've had some conversations, I can report to you. We've shared some, some documents, I've sketched some things up on a couple of the options that, that Jim has mentioned, and we're meeting Friday, we're going to go over some things, and we're going to use that as our springboard for our next committee meeting. So we're going to come in and use that as our, our agenda item. But we're, we're basically, we're off and running and everything, so we're really excited. We're going to make benefit, take use of, of this summer to, to get those options all laid out, and then we'll be reporting back to the board. But again, I want to thank you for, for the opportunity, and if you have any questions for me.
And I'm going, I'm going to add a little bit more, in that the resolution you see in front of you, which is a little bit later down the agenda, is for $4,100 for their pre-bond work. At that time, once we get to the point of whether we're going for a bond issue and whether it passes, that doesn't obligate us to anything with Hammond after that point. So if we want to, if we're happy and want to move forward with Hammond with the construction of the new building, we have that opportunity, but again, it's, it's, it will kind of be on us at that point. So what that contract is, is before you is, again, pre-bond work with giving them permission to work with TDA to get our program of requirements out there and what we can afford.
Yeah.
So.
That's great, thank you.
Any questions for him?
Not yet.
Yeah, well, I certainly, I appreciate being proactive and looking at, looking at all these issues in detail. When I first saw pre-bond, I, you know, I thought, oh, that means we've sort of made a decision, or, and I hope that's kind of not the case, I hope that, I mean, obviously as a construction company, you're, and this is not, please don't take this as an attack, but you know, you value construction, right? You're going to look at this as what can we do as a construction solution, and I hope we'll also look at what can we can do with what we have. Because I, I guess I, you know, I know that we have voted that we will eventually have a single, you know, I want to see that, but I don't feel like I've ever expressed my support for building a 6-12 school without state funding, and, and state funding's off, you know, off in the future. That may happen at some point, it might be the right thing to do, but I don't feel that I have said, yes, we should build a 6-12 school without state funding.
Yeah. No, and what the proposal was, was to explore options, cost options for a 6-8, or a 9-12, or a 6-12. So we'll bring all that back to you once...
And, you know, the other thing I think that's unique about Oberlin is that Oberlin voters have always been supportive, and by, by the way, I have never voted against a school bond, I will never vote against a school bond. That will not happen, I will never oppose one. But Oberlin, Oberlin voters have always been supportive of the schools, and so in a lot of communities, you'll say, well, let's just put this on the ballot and see what the voters say. I think the voters, I think we should expect the voters to trust us, and I think we should only put something on the ballot if we really feel this is absolutely the right thing to do. We don't leave it up to the voters, I think we have to make that decision, because the voters are going to support it, unless it's just really something that's just, you know...
Financially they can, yeah.
That's, that's, that's exactly our role. You know, we, we've been brought on to work with TDA to, to develop those, those options. We know what they are in our heads, but we've got to explore those and then put real costs to them, and then bring them to you. So that's, that's what we're going to do. As I said in our, in our presentation, I'm thinking that probably on the low end, it's going to be four or five options, or maybe, there may be eight of them, but, and as you get into it also, an option could, could, you know, branch off to an option 1A, you know, so to speak. So that's, you know, that, that's our role, is to give the board the information that you all need to allow you to move forward with the OFCC on, on their Phase Two. Whether you build the whole 6-12 at one time, or whether you build a portion of it, that's what we're going to explore for you and, and, and provide all those, all, all the answers to the questions that we have in our head right now, which we just haven't gotten there yet.
It's certainly a very complicated question, and I appreciate you looking into it.
Well, this, this is what we do. As I, again, as I mentioned in our, in our presentation, we've been doing, I've been doing this for 20 years, and then I've been doing it for 15 years with, with Hammond, you know, specifically. So, I mean, this, this is, this is what I've dedicated myself to. And working with Cheryl Fisher and, and TDA, I mean, she's like the little sister I never wanted, so, and if she was here tonight, she would say, he's like the big brother I never wanted. So it's, it's, it's going to be fun.
Couple of things we're looking at, too, is also options with Oberlin High School's gym, auditorium, playing fields, so all those options will be on the table as well. So they're going to explore, they may have five, six, seven, eight plans of different scenarios for us. So we're not there yet for construction or bond, but there is going to give us a bunch of scenarios for us to look at.
So I'm about third of the way done with my prison, now I'm joking. That was it. Any questions for me?
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Concludes my report.
Thank you. Now, I will entertain a motion to move to executive session pursuant to Revise Code 12122-G2 to consider the sale of property at competitive bidding since disclosure at this time would give unfair competitive or bargaining advantage to persons whose personal private interest is adverse to the general public interest.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion before we vote? Questions? Okay, hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Stanley?
Yes.
Ms. Shum?
Yes.
Ms. Stagel?
Yes.
Ms. Mecca?
Yes.
So we're going to go into executive session and come back.
Yes.
The roll action.
The roll action.
Here's your first check.
Their choice.
Well, it was a lovely one.
Is he, or is that why?
Uh, my son. They love him.
This one is, my mic sounds nice.
Yes, um, it did seem once they were there, but.
How's it going?
Good.
Good. Nice seeing you, yeah.
Yeah, I'm just having a bit.
Not too bad?
Yeah.
I like this cloudy gray weather, but. A lot of up trips, working yard.
Where'd you go?
Yeah, um, my sister-in-law, this society with her kids. What about you?
Talking about. Vacation's kind of the end of July, on national.
As I said, this is true in time, everybody, when we're at that old, that's a scandal. Why did they? You called it rural mom, uh, witness or jury thing.
Oh, yeah, soon, that's this year.
We got called. We're doing this on trial and everything.
That's coming up this year.
Oh, he yelled, you can't say that, you can't do this, just as a witness, don't bring your personal being.
Oh, my God.
All right, may I see you take care.
Okay, so, I will, I will entertain a motion.
Okay, so I will, I will entertain a motion to return to regular session.
So moved.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Stanley?
Yes.
Ms. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Stagel?
Yes.
Ms. Ameca?
Yes. Okay, now we have action items. We have board items. I will entertain a motion to approve the board items on the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Dr. Hall?
Item A, approval of the May twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three regular session minutes. Item B is approval of employ- of the employment of twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four substitute teachers resolution, Senate bill. That would allow the district to employ substitute teachers with a high school diploma, utilize that this year, and that was a two-year agreement from the resolution from the Senate bill, and it could take effect for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Item C is approval of the heat relief centers MOU. Item D is approval of the resolution approving construction management at risk agreement with Hammond Construction in connection with the construction of the six-twelve school building. That was a presentation that Hammond Construction provided for us earlier. Request approval of item A through D from the board.
Yep.
Yes.
I know that we, we had a conversation about item B.
Yes.
Do you have any general analysis of how frequently we had to bring in teachers that had high school diplomas versus degrees?
Yes, we have six so far this year that was, that we utilized for this year. One of them was permanent billing sub, and five was utilized. I believe, um, let me send it to Joanna.
I think it was thirteen days or thirty-four days.
Five were, were used for thirty-four days throughout the school year.
Okay.
So it did provide support for us, and it go through a screening process with us and a background check. Very selective if you were doing it.
And, and so I know we don't really have an evaluation of effectiveness measure, but what, do you have a gut reaction to the, any impact on the quality of education that our students are facing because of using?
I think the six that we've utilized have been very effective and helped us out, especially in a lot of areas where we're short on. And as everyone know, there's a major teacher shortage, substitute shortage, employment service, uh, employment shortage as well. The gut feeling is they have pan out. It's very few that's doing it, so the six that performed a task, we kind of know, been in the community, worked with us, through the background check, and we've screened them very carefully.
Good. All right, thank you.
I'm, I'm, I'm struggling with the wording on this, uh, on, on item D. Approval resolution of reviewing construction management, management of risk agreement with Hammond Construction in connection with the construction of a six-twelve school building. If I were just reading that, and I wasn't here, it would, it just looks to me like we've decided that the six-twelve building is next. In fact, that is what I read when I, you know, when I came here. So I'm just struggling with that. Any, any thoughts on how to make it clear in there that, that six-twelve building is one option, but there are a lot of other options? Six-eight building, nine-twelve.
I can add in there for pre-bid, because that should be a part of that. It is construction manager at risk for pre-bid.
I'm just concerned about it, you know, it's, it just specifies six-twelve.
And the resolution does state only for pre-bid items.
I, I, I think his, if, if I hear the concern is that it sounds like we've already concluded that the solution is a pre-bid, as opposed to presenting options up to and including a six through twelve building.
Is it possible to maybe, cause in, in the resolution and in other references to this part of the project, it refers to it as phase two. And there's pretty specific description around phase two of our construction project. Maybe we can use that word instead or that descriptor?
Phase two, yes.
And there's, there's a little bit more to it, but.
Yeah.
Yeah. Good solution.
I think as long as it's clear that we haven't made the decision.
Yeah.
That, that next step is to build a six-twelve school building in the near future.
Yes.
And he was talking about, you know, four or five, you know, four or five different options.
Right.
I think that's important to me.
Yeah, and we've talked quite a bit about how we don't want to communicate that we've decided on anything yet, so that's important. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Any other comments, questions? Okay, hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Stanley?
Yes.
Ms. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Stagel?
Yes.
Ms. Ameca?
Yes. Um, next we have treasurer items. Should I, wait, do I need to ask for?
Yes.
So can we please have a, can I have a motion or entertain a motion to approve treasurer items A through E?
So moved. Second.
Okay. Bob?
Thank you. Um, for May, we ended the month with seventeen million, six hundred thirty-nine thousand, eight hundred seventy-eight dollars and ninety-four cents. We had a payroll transfer of sixty-one eighty-eight that was reconciled and outstanding checks of sixty-nine thousand, seven ninety-five point six-two. Our spending for the month, the general fund, we were right in line, we're ninety-two percent. Through the year, we had collected, um, we collected ninety-nine point eight-seven percent as of the end of May of the revenues that I had projected, so we're doing very well there. We will come in a little bit above my five-year forecast numbers. The only thing that wasn't put in as of today for the month of June was this state foundation payment, so we should be about three hundred thousand dollars higher than what the five-year forecast says for revenues. As for expenses, we're again, we're below projections. We're showing eighty-seven percent of the spent expenses of the general fund being paid, and it looks like end of the year, we should be around a half a million under the projected number that I gave at the five-year forecast for May. So we did do the advances, so we did move out the advance and then also lend the debt fund the two-point-one million dollars.
Bob, can you talk, speak up a little bit?
I'm sorry. So we did have the operating transfer of two million, five hundred thirty-three thousand dollars that we moved into the construction project from the nexus dollars that the general fund has collected, and then we also loaned our debt fund to repay the bonds, or to repay the notes that we had of two-point-one million dollars. So now all the notes are paid off, and we would continue to collect the tax dollars until the general fund is repaid from the county. All funds report. Again, like I just said, we're up in revenues. All the funds seem to be coming in as we thought they would. The lunch fund will be, I'll get to the lunch fund of what we need to transfer to the lunch fund and also athletics. Other than that, technology, Steve has rebuilt his surplus. We still got a little ways to go to get to where we want to be for our five-year projections. And then, like Jim said earlier, we have closed out the building project. We did make final payment here in June, and we'll be sending that information down to the state. Next, we have the temporary appropriations for two thousand twenty-three and twenty-four. We do this annually. We do the budget in January, and this just gives the auditor any changes that has happened since January so that we start the new, new year off. So total appropriations for school year two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four would be twenty-five million, nine hundred sixty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars, which is what we submitted back in January to the county auditor. The next item, item C is to transfer ninety-one, not to exceed ninety-one thousand dollars to the cafeteria fund, and then eight thousand dollars not to exceed to the athletic fund. And then the last item is, we have communicated with the person that started the Kurt Russell Scholarship Fund, and all arrangements have been made that we can transfer not to exceed sixteen thousand dollars once we make payment to the award winner this year to the foundation where they can invest and market that scholarship fund so that it can get more donations to it. And then we had donations for the month of May, two hundred and fifty dollars for senior lunch accounts. Elizabeth Elrod donated flowers for the planners in the board office, in front of the board office, and Riley McKinn and her company, T.R. Price, donated six thousand one hundred and thirty-eight dollars to the Kurt Russell Scholarship Fund. She was a graduate of the school. I'm, I'm not sure when.
Yeah, McInerney. Now is that included in that sixteen thousand that just got transferred over?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Any other questions, discussion? Were you done? Okay, hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Stanley?
Yes.
Ms. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Stagel?
Yes.
Ms. Ameca?
Yes. Okay, and now I will entertain a motion to move to executive session pursuant to revised code one twenty-one, twenty-two G one to consider the appointment, employment, or compensation of a public employee or official.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? It's been properly moved and seconded. Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Stanley?
Yes.
Ms. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Stagel?
Yes.
Ms. Ameca?
Yes, and there will be business after that executive session. And there will be business after that executive session.
Busy, man.
I'm okay, but thank you.
Wow, it's cold in here.
Yeah, it's cold in here.
Oh, my God.
Okay, we're good. Okay, so I will entertain a motion to return to regular session.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Nope.
Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Mr. Stanley?
Yes.
Ms. Sham?
Yes.
Ms. Stagel?
Yes.
Ms. Simeka?
Yes. Now, we have superintendents, consent items, A through K five.
J five.
J five, sorry, J five. I'll entertain a motion to approve those.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded. Dr. Hall?
Item A, approval of twenty-three, twenty-four middle school career check waiver forms annual occurrence. District ought to offer seventy career check programs at the school. Item B is twenty-three, twenty-four ESC career down shooter agreement. Item C is approval of twenty-three, twenty-four mental health addiction recovery hours for Lorraine County agreement. Annual occurrence, safer body, mental health support from us, from the elder agencies. Item W is one of those agencies in our schools as well, helping us too. Item B is approval of twenty-three, twenty-four Lorraine County board meeting reasonable agreement. They provide services for our students' disabilities. Item E, approval of ABA outreach services and overall agreement. They provide behavioral plans for our students and professional development for our students as well. Hope this is, I know we went to the board last time a couple of times, but hope this is not hours this time for us to utilize their services.
Can you, yeah, can you speak to that a little bit, Dr. Hall, just to, how did we increase them or, you know, what was the consideration there?
Based on students coming into the district, sometimes we may get a student move in or a couple of students move in the middle of the year, end of the year, and they may need behavioral plans or more additional support that we're able to provide. So we increase the hours of time based upon the students coming into the district. The last, I'd say, last couple of months of school last year, we received a large amount of students coming in that maybe needed additional support. So that's why we're increasing it. And this could happen again this year as well for twenty-three, twenty-four. We can receive five, six, ten kids into the district who that's an area that needs additional support. And then we have to come to the board and increase it.
Okay, there's not a way to kind of, I guess you have to pay a certain amount, but you can't leave it open-ended or anything?
Yeah, pressure thing, I think, I don't think we can.
No, their agreements on an hourly basis.
Okay.
And we do a do not exceed this number.
Got it.
So we, we project what we feel are enrollment, but we had a huge spike this year. And it's not that they need an IEP, it's behavioral. So it's not the same thing, and this is something that's just really happened since COVID. We've never used this company before until after COVID.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Item F is a Lorraine County inter-AC agreement. Inter-AC agreement includes early HSTAR Lorraine County Board Development Disabilities. Lorraine County has PCH disease and early intervention services in Lorraine County. That agreement helps us collaborate together with the agencies that work for those students. Item G is approval of dead book quote terms additions. And that's more of finance, tech, or technology that we license, Bob, if anyone.
Yeah, this, this is a, GAZB sixty-nine took effect July first of two thousand twenty-two, and this is a program that will help us lease all of our technology leases that we have in the district, which I think we're up to forty-four, we're going to finalize it hopefully tomorrow. Steve and I have worked on, and it's just getting those all in place, putting, if they're a five-year agreement, when they start, when they don't, then we have to amortize that cost and treat it like an asset. Because GAZB sixty, or ninety-six is saying that school districts cannot function now without these educational licenses, and now you must treat them as you would a school bus.
Right.
So. So that's really what it is, is breaking down the fifteen, thirty-page agreements and finding out every little cost that might be in there and putting that in there and amortizing it for the cost of it. And then when we do our conversion from cap to gap, our auditors will then look at that and put it in proper notes procedures and then audit it accordingly.
Item H is approval of first reading discussion of following audits review policies. First reading, we did have work with our CEO personally and that went over actually three progress. And we will not meet with Norm in July. So.
Darn.
Norm and our new owner rep, but we're going to take a break in July and get back in about.
That was a lot of policies to read, and I didn't have to talk through it all, so.
I'd like to thank our board members too, because they're involved in that process. I mean, it's about two to three hours, and I know you're working all day. You take time out of your schedules to actually attend those meetings with Norm on our policy. It's a lot. And our, luckily, our board, you guys read them beforehand and actually have great questions for Norm and catch Norm off guard all the time. So we'd like to thank you for your diligence as well. Item I is approval of second reading for adoption of following policies for audit. Item J is the resignations. Item two is change of positions for staff members. Item three is leave of absence for some staff members. We do have Marine Pareto's leave of absence for here, Julia Thomas as well. We have hired a Spanish teacher to replace Julia Thomas. And we have reached out to the college because we are very much involved with the sites program. And, uh, Dr. Faber was also on our interview team as well from college, also like to do a teaching. Next is the recommendation of appointment of model personnel, item, should be item four. Item five supplemental contracts. Request approval from items eight through J five for the board.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Stanley?
Yes.
Ms. Shum?
Yes.
Ms. Stagel?
Yes.
Ms. Simakka?
Yes. And now I will entertain a motion to approve superintendent's item K.
So moved.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve item K, Dr. Hall.
Item K is recommendation approval determining deployment of Jaylee Rosso custodian, uh, custodian at our building, section six, twenty-eight, twenty-three. Request approval of item K.
Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Stanley?
Yes.
Ms. Shum?
Yes.
Ms. Stagel?
Yes.
Ms. Simakka?
Yes. Okay, so that is the superintendent items. Um, any hearing of the public on other items? There's nobody left, so. Uh, our future meetings are August eighth, we're going to have a special meeting, work session here, um, at the elementary school. And then our regular meeting will be August twenty-second, same time, same place. We are off in the month of July. Um, and with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Were there any board reports that we needed to do?
Oh, yeah, they're not on here.
Nine.
Yeah, they are.
Did I? Oh, whoops, I'm sorry, I skipped over that. I'm trying to get out of here.
Said, I had to get.
Yeah, so board update, sorry. Anybody?
I have none.
Uh, the JVS meeting hasn't happened yet. It's tomorrow or Thursday because we always schedule it as late in June because this is the end of the fiscal year. Um, so I don't have an update there.
And the policies committee?
Yeah.
Our work is.
You guys were very busy.
It was pretty apparent on this agenda. Um.
Has there been any town gown action?
No, not since the last meeting that we had. There has not.
And the Downwind Board has not met again since we gave people money, so.
Are we getting reports on the projects?
Yes.
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 Yes, that's all in the, um.
Pictures then reports. And Melissa's copied on all the pictures.
Yeah, and there was one, or it was a write-up somewhere recently, although now I can't remember where it was. Maybe it was in the one they sent home, or maybe it was in the monthly.
Yeah.
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 Was it on Facebook or something?
Well, I just, I knew that was, sometimes it's always difficult to actually get the stories out. Um, so I just wanted to make sure that was happening from the communications hat.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Okay, thank you. Now, okay, thank you for reminding me of that. Um, now I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. All in favor? Oh, well, please call the roll.
Mr. Stanley?
Yes.
Ms. Shum?
Yes.
Stagel?
Yes.
Ms. Simakka?
Yes. Thank you. I call the meeting to the close.